Good evening, everyone. The time is 7:02, and I would like to call this meeting to order. Vice President Ferguson, could you do the invocation, please?
Good evening, everyone. Father God, we just give you glory and honor. You are the beginning, our beginning, and you are he who we fear. And Father God, we just ask for your presence in this meeting. We ask for your wisdom, your knowledge, your direction, your love, and your peace. Father God, we just thank you for keeping us another day. We thank you for the opportunity to represent this city. We ask that you will bless us and keep us. Bless the citizens of Glen Arden, bless the employees of Glen Arden, and all who is affiliated with the city. We thank you in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Amen, thank you. Council Clerk, could you do the roll call, please?
Sure. Councilwoman Fareed.
Here.
Councilwoman Gill.
Here.
Councilwoman Hareston.
Here.
Councilwoman Herring.
Here.
Councilwoman Jones.
Here.
Council Vice President Ferguson.
Here.
Council President Curtis.
Here.
All accounted for.
Has the recording started on?
Yes.
Because I don't see anything on the TV.
It's in flash.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. All right, is there, um, there we go. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Sub move.
Second.
Any discussion? Opposition? Since we have one council member aligned, we'll just do the roll call.
Councilwoman. Councilwoman Fareed.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gill.
Yes.
I'll say it again.
Councilwoman Hareston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Herring.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones.
Yes.
Vice President Ferguson.
Yes.
And President Curtis.
Yes. And if I haven't said it, this meeting is being recorded. Thank you. All right. The only thing on the agenda today are citizens' comments on pending legislation. Every second week, we hold a public hearing so that our citizens can make their voices heard on legislation that's pending before we vote on it next week, and this is your time to speak. So on the agenda, the legislative agenda is Resolution R 38, 2023, Resolution Purchase Public Works Pickup Truck, Resolution R 39, a resolution to pave the parking lot at MLK, Resolution 40, 2023, a resolution to support recreational activities in the city of Glen Arden, Resolution R 41, which is a resolution to approve the Community Resilience Fund Guidelines, Resolution R 42, which is a resolution to approve the Good Samaritan Hardship Fund Guidelines, Resolution 43, a resolution to approve the Glen Arden Housing Authority Grant Guidelines, Resolution 44, a resolution to approve the Glen Arden Homeowners Association Grant Guidelines, Resolution 45, a resolution to approve the Intergenerational Poverty Relief Fund Guidelines, and, oh wow, there's a lot. Resolution 46, a resolution to approve a new contract with Charles J. Johnson Jr. and Associates. Resolution 47, a resolution to authorize participation in Prince George's County Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Program, and to authorize the city manager to sign a cooperative agreement, cooperation agreement. Resolution 48, a resolution to approve the investment allocation to Maryland Local Government Investment Pool. Resolution 49, a resolution to authorize an agreement with Red Speed LLC for vehicle speed reduction camera system and for ticket collection. Resolution 50, a resolution to select the city council president, and Resolution 51, a resolution to select the city council vice president. The floor is open to citizens' comments. When you come up, please state your name, and you'll have five minutes. Are there any? Mr. Powell? Please state your name, and then your time will start.
This one?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Powell, and I live in Woodville. On the legislation R 41, 2023, certain businesses are not eligible to receive the grant, just like vape stores and liquor stores and tobacco shops, but as far as I know, they have to have a permit fee to operate in the city of Glen Arden, which they pay for. And the city clearly take their money. So if you taking their money, they should be eligible to receive this fund. That'll be only fair, because you can't pick and choose which businesses you think should receive the fund. Everybody got to pay the permit fee. That's my understanding, everybody got to pay to operate in the city of Glen Arden. They should be eligible to least be considered for the fund that they're paying the permit fee to the city. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other public comments? Yes, ma'am? Ms. Smallwood? I'm sorry, did she? One second, Ms. Smallwood.
I just wanted to answer, thank you, Mr. Powell, for your comment in regards to the Community Resilience Hardship Fund. I just wanted to say that this, we actually have the jurisdiction per ARPA guidelines to dictate which businesses should get incentives, and ARPA actually states that as well. ARPA meaning the federal government. As far as the tobacco stores are concerned, for example, that you referenced, we've heard an outcry about the tobacco stores not being a necessity nor a want in the community, and as a response to that, it would only be right to not add them to the list of getting funding to be in a community that doesn't want them. So just wanted to say that, and I will be more than willing to offline, should you like, or I can pull it up later, to provide the federal government ARPA guidelines to show you where they actually stipulate that, as well as far as tobacco stores and things of that nature.
Thank you. Ms. Smallwood?
Madam Clerk?
The podium mic is not on.
The podium mic is not on. One second, Ms. Smallwood. Testing, testing. Can you hear me? Okay, no? Can you ask him, Mr. Gray, to turn the, there we go.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Ms. Smallwood. We said your name, but the floor's yours.
Good evening, everyone. Resolution R 40, 2023. Line number 27, I want to know why is the?
I'm sorry, can you speak into the mic, please? I can't hear you, so I know online that can hear you.
Line 40, line 27, I want to know why the therefore, now therefore is not included on that line?
I'm sorry, which one were you talking about?
R 40, 23. Also, I'm not in agreement with this resolution. And the reason why I'm not in agreement with this resolution, because the Glen Arden Track Club is a private club, and the city doesn't allow for us to give money to private organization. Second of all, the Glen Arden Track Club earns money every time they give a sponsor a Glen Arden Track Meet over at the Complex Center. They earn, they use it for free, and they get all the money from the concession stand. And they handle, I think they're host about two or three meetings out of the year, just just for the summer, and I think they host two or three meetings also in the wintertime. They also receive grant money from the state. They do not have a recruitment process for the city of Glen Arden. None of the kids know when and where to go to sign up for the recruitment, what day, what time, when the recruitment start, when the recruitment period end. Also, I'm gonna say 90% of the kids that's on the Track Club do not live in Glen Arden. So if you want to pay money for the kids to live in Glen Arden with this resolution, I have no problem with that. But if you're gonna take taxpayer money and give to a private organization, I do have a problem with that. That's Resolution R 41, 2023. Somewhere in this resolution, it should have the word small businesses included in it, even though you have it in the headline on page one of page five. And my concern is this, some of these citizens, some of these small businesses had already received ARPA money during the time of COVID. So y'all really need to check into that to see who received money, who did not receive money, before y'all be giving these small businesses more money. Resolution R 42, 2023, I do not agree with this because Resolution R 42 and R 45 is a duplicate, as far as I'm concerned. They can pour money from both pool, and also think that you should have a limitation on how long the person lived in the city during the time COVID was in, was in effect. And if they get the money, they should have a timeframe of at least five years before they can move out the city. R 44, eligibility, my concern is none of the HOAs, with the exception of the one in Woodmore, has an outdoor swimming pool. So I don't understand why this one is on the, on the list. And also, y'all spoke of amenities. What other type of amenities are you referring to? And also, you spoke of all the costs approved by the city. What, specify what those costs are, or specify what those items are. Other than that, if you can improve this, then I might go along with the resolution. The same thing for R 45. R 45 and R 44, they intertwine, so y'all need to clear that up because I don't think a person should get both. If you have a small business and you already didn't receive any money from, from, from the federal government, I don't see why Glen Arden is now trying to give you small, trying to give you more money. And the last one.
Thank you. Please wrap it up, Ms. Smallwood, please. I said, yo, you could go ahead and finish this last one.
Well, there's two more. Well, R 48, I don't agree with this resolution because I don't see you taking 90% of your, your money and putting it in an investment that has a fluctuating rate. So if you, if you got $90,000 and you're gonna put $80,000 in the market, that's dangerous because the city can lose money. So y'all need to rethink this. In my opinion, the money, the money should be where it is. And that's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Smallwood.
She got a comment. I want to hear her comment.
Yeah, but you can.
I can stay in here.
Respectfully, Ms. Smallwood, if you can just have a seat, and we'll respond after you sit down, that'd be great. Thank you.
I understand the game you're trying to play, Mr. Curtis.
No games, just trying to be fair.
If anybody else do believe, let them stand up and give.
No, ma'am. Okay. Councilman Gill?
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to respond to the comments that Ms. Smallwood made in regards to R 41.
Speak it to anybody.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Council President. I wanted to respond to the comments that Councilwoman, I'm sorry, that Ms. Smallwood made in regards to R 41, R 42, and R 45. So in regards to R 41, which is the Community Resilience Fund Guidelines for small businesses, we actually wrote in, on page two out of five, and it's in the packet, that we will be reviewing applications on a first-come, first-served basis while funding is available, and priority will be given to applicants who have not previously received COVID-19 relief from the federal government, state of Maryland, Prince George's County, and/or city of Glen Arden. So we actually stipulated that. So when you mentioned the point about COVID dollars, we actually put that in there. But we also know that COVID hit the small businesses really, really hard. So while we're saying a priority will be given to organizations that did not receive, we are not omitting businesses that did receive. Again, we will prioritize and look into that. As far as legislation, R 42 and R 45 respectively, one is the Good Samaritan Hardship Fund, and the other one is the Intergenerational Poverty Relief Fund. Those are two different things, completely two different things. The Intergenerational Poverty Fund is a strategic code enforcement, or I'd like to call it strategic code encouragement, grant. And that money does not go to a citizen. It goes to the contractors who will be fixing their homes, homes that have been in really bad condition during and probably even before, and definitely after COVID. I walked the city, and I saw a lot of these homes myself. And seeing that these homes cannot get funding from the government because of where they are located, meaning where Glen Arden is located, Prince George's County gives money to contractors to fix homes outside of Glen Arden because they are near the Blue Line Corridor, the Purple Line Corida, and corridor and other places. Glen Arden citizens were not able to get that. If you look at the Intergenerational Poverty Relief Fund and the Good Samaritan, you will see that there are income guidelines. Those incomes are for people who are low to almost no income, seniors, veterans, families who basically are trying to get by. But again, the Intergenerational Poverty Relief Fund, that money goes to a contractor that the city will approve to do work, such as their roof, doors hanging off the hinges, steps, broken windows, things of that nature, to get fixed. The hardship fund is something completely different. The hardship fund, same economic threshold. This is for people who are poor to very poor or on fixed incomes, such as, like I said before, the elderly, the folks who are on disability, et cetera, et cetera. That money goes directly to them. That is $1,250 per person, and that particular money goes for utilities for, well, excuse me, the intent is for folks who are struggling to get by. Meaning if you are in need of food, utilities, prescriptions, if you lost your job, things of that nature. So to me, both of these things are not the same. One is strategic code enforcement. The other one goes to the hardship that a household faced. And overall, the intent behind all, well, both of these in particular, is to not criminalize poverty and to make sure that the citizens who have been hardest hit during the COVID pandemic and who were already on limited incomes have an opportunity to catch up and to know that the city helped them. Thank you.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes. I'd like to address the Resolution R 40, 2023. Ms. Smallwood, you indicated that the Glen Arden Track Team is a private organization. First of all, the Glen Arden Track Team, or I'll say the Glen Arden Boys and Girls Club and the Glen Arden Track Team are legacy organizations within our city. These are organizations that have worked with children from the very beginning. Like I said, I was on the Glen Arden Boys and Girls Club as a child myself. So the Boys and Girls Club has been around for a long, a very long time, and the Track Team has been around for more than 30 years. And they have worked with children from all across Prince George's County or wherever they had found, had children that came to the Track Team and signed up, or the Boys and Girls Club that signed up and wanted to do something other than run the streets or do nothing all summer. Both of those organizations are volunteer organizations, parent organizations, people that come together to make sure that these children are invested in something that's gonna enhance their growth and knowledge and wisdom to go out into the world. The Glen Arden Track Team, their whole goal is to make sure that children get into college. Glen Arden Track Team is a 501(c)(3) organization, and when you're designated a 501(c)(3) organization, you cannot be a private organization because everyone is welcome when you're 501(c)(3). Ms. Smallwood, may I ask you a question? Is, no? No? Oh, I'm sorry. All right, thank you. That's, that's what I had to say about concerning that.
Councilwoman Fareed?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Councilwoman Jones, for pointing out that the Glen Arden Track Club is a 501(c)(3), as is the Glen Arden Boys and Girls Club. I won't speak on the same points that you have already articulated around the benefits that these organizations have provided to our city. I do also, you know, want to point out, though, that we need to acknowledge the impact that these organizations have had on our community, particularly with the granting of our name. We spend every year more than three times that amount on a single day that we mark it as Glen Arden Day. And that, that day is not limited to just the citizens of Glen Arden. But we have that day so that people in the community can know that the city of Glen Arden is here to represent them and to be able to really enjoy themselves and have a good time. Whereas the amount of money that we're looking to put forward specifically for the Glen Arden Track Club and respectively the Boys and Girls Club is $2,500 for each of them. We spend far more than that on other activities that benefit the committee, of the community. These organizations, as well as any other organizations in the city of Glen Arden, who will come and bring services to our students and our children, which will keep them off the street, which will help them stay healthy, anything like that, I will continue to support and move forward for our city.
Thank you. And Ms. Smallwood, I only have two comments. So as Council President, I have the task of keeping the order of the meeting. And so each citizen has five minutes. You can choose to use your five minutes the way you want to. If you want to spend the first minute asking a question and want to use your five minutes with us answering a question, just know that's in your five minutes. The reason why I have citizens sit down after the five minutes, because if you stand up there, then we respond, then you're gonna be tempted at the mic to ask another question. And then I'm getting a comment from the next person, well, why come you let this person stay up there and get more time? And then it gets too chaotic. So respectfully, I'm gonna give you guys your five minutes. I would ask that you ask your questions. We'll write them down, and we'll respond after you, you sit down. And then we're all here after the meeting. So if you want to continue the conversation, please, I'll stand behind and answer all of your questions, any questions you have for me. And the last point is with the, the comment about Resolution R 48, the investment allocation to the investment. This is not the typical 401(k) investment where it goes up with the ups and downs with the downs. This is essentially, this is just simply an interest-bearing account. I will take my checking account, for example. I have a, I have a checkings and a savings linked together. I keep most of my money in savings because it earns money by just sitting there because I'm not using it. Whenever I need more money in my checking, I just transfer it. It's instantaneous. I transfer $100, $100 is in my operating account, but that $100, I use it to pay something. I never lose money in my savings. So this is not your 401(k) investment. This is simply your, our money sitting in an account that can make money overnight. At my former place of employment, we had a sweep account. Our operating funds got swept out into a savings account and swept back in in the morning. Overnight, we made $1,000. That's all it is. So we're not going to be putting the city's funds in any risky investment pools or anything. It's just simply your money sitting there making money. And that's, I believe, a smart business decision for, for any type of business. Floor is open. Citizens' comments, just raise your hand. Yes, sir, please state your name, and you have five minutes.
I'm gonna stick to my five minutes. My name is Sean McCoy, and I'm actually here representing the Glen Arden Boys and Girls Club. I'm actually the Vice President of the Boys and Girls Club and also the Football Commissioner. I'm here, Resolution R 40, I think this is a great idea for us. To give you a little background about myself, I actually grew up in Glen Arden. Moved in Glen Arden when I was three years old. And this place right here brings back memories because my first job was with the town of Works right here behind us, cutting grass around Glen Arden. So this community has, has my heart. And like I said, R 40, I think this is a good place and a good start for us as a Boys and Girls Club in the community. I've been coaching football for Glen Arden now for 22 years. And it's, it's a good thing for me, and it's a good thing for these kids. Because like I say, at the end of the day, our goal is to get these kids off the street and get them active and doing something. We also have a mentor program as well that we're trying to implement into the Boys and Girls Club. We do mentorship on Friday nights with the boys and girls. We have basketball. We get ready to do soccer. Basketball, wrestling, and football, those are our main three sports that we have right now. So I'm in support of R 40, and I think this is a great start for us right now. And I'm looking forward to partnering and working with, with y'all on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I saw her at first, and now I'll come to you. Councilwoman Jones?
I just went, Sean McCoy, Coggar Avenue.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. The Jones family. All right.
All right. Then I saw Councilwoman Fareed. Councilwoman Gill?
I just want to publicly thank you, Coach Sean, as I affectionately have heard you be referenced for years. Before I even became a fam, a member of this beautiful community, I've always heard about Coach Sean, Coach Sean. And at the same time, I've always heard, respectively, as far as the Glen Arden Track Club is concerned, I've heard about Coach Henry and Coach Field and all these names. And you and others who we probably haven't even heard of their names yet are the spoken heroes. And I think you and folks who give of their lives and times to children and the community at large should be recognized publicly, not just within legislation, but just by folks in various communities. And I want to thank you and others for representing Glen Arden the way that you do. Unfortunately, sometimes we see Glen Arden in the negative light on the news. I am always proud when I see Glen Arden Boys and Girls Club or when I hear about the Glen Arden Track Club and see their names, you know, see them representing our name on their backs and on their fronts. So thank you publicly from me to you.
Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to also clarify a point because I've heard it mentioned several times that the information about the Boys and Girls Club or the Track Club is not available. I would say that's not true. I have a young child, and so I'm aware of the different recruitment opportunities and the different, the different sports activities that she's not in her head that she can get involved in. And so I just think it's a matter of when you're.
And so, I just think it's a matter of when you're in, when you're looking for that type of thing, you can find it, right? I'm in the market for that type of information. So, it's, it seems to be readily available to me. So, I will say that you all do a great job of recruiting on social media and through word of mouth. So, thank you for all you do for the city.
And Councilwoman Jones?
And I don't want to leave out Coach Elgin Gordon. He's also a coach on Glen Arden Track Team with Mr. Henry and with Mr. Fields, who lives in the City of Glen Arden. I want to thank all three of those persons personally, too. Thank you.
All right. Are there any other citizens' comments, either in person or online? If you're online, please raise your virtual hand. If you do not know how to raise your virtual hand, then type something in the chat, and the council clerk will monitor that, and we'll call on you. In the meantime, Ms. Wilson? Ms. Wilson, if you could state your name, you have five minutes.
Hi, I think everyone here knows my name.
All right.
Because you just said it. There's no need to repeat myself. Since this is a public hearing, and it is a place where citizens can voice their opinions, that's why I stand here. I don't want anyone to misconstrue what I'm saying. I don't want you to misunderstand. I love children. I have four children of my own. I have four grandchildren, and I have a great-granddaughter. So, I love children, and I do think that we need to give children something to do. However, the way that this Resolution forty is stated, it is, I don't agree with it the way it's stated. I'll put it that way, okay? And I don't support organizations that do not include all children. That's where I have an issue. All children are not invited to participate with the Glen Arden Track Club. I have been here for forty-four years. I have sons who ran, and they were never invited to participate in the Glen Arden Track Club. Sir, your organization, the Boys and Girls Club, I see advertisements. You, you have a sign up there on the corner.
Point of order, point of order. Please don't address any citizen. You can, you can make your comment.
I'm just saying.
I understand.
Okay. Based upon what this gentleman right here has said, just before me, his sign, he has a sign up there on the corner. It's advertising that organization. I never see anything concerning the Glen Arden Track Club. The only time I really hear about them is when they come here for funding. That's when I've heard of them. Now, Ms., when you all were discussing the budget last, the other week, there were comments that were made to the mayor, and several council members grilled the mayor on.
One second. But are we talking about?
This is in the budget.
So, we're.
This item on forty is in the budget.
On Resolution forty?
You're trying, you're trying to put that in the budget. And if you just let me make my comments, maybe you will understand.
Thank you. I'll, I'll, go ahead.
Okay. And I bring it up because it's an item that you're trying to put into the budget. So, on that, on that evening, you all were talking about using taxpayer dollars for special events that benefited persons or organizations that are outside of Glen Arden and not the citizens of Glen Arden. And I think that this resolution does the same thing in part because if the organization does not benefit Glen Arden's children, all of Glen Arden's children, then funding should not be set aside for the outside organizations. The council is doing the same thing that the mayor is doing. I, I haven't seen anything where the Glen Arden Track Club openly recruits children, Glen Arden's children. It is by word of mouth, which Ms., which Councilwoman Jones has stated several times, that it is by word of mouth that recruitment is done. So, if it's only by word of mouth, then that does not fall on all children's ears or the parents of all children. So, that means that it's only opened up to certain children. So, this organization may have been beneficial to our children in the past, but is it really beneficial to, to our children now? So, I feel that it shouldn't be put in the budget. And it's my understanding that in the past, this organization, the Track Club, has received gratis. So, if they receive gratis, why do we extend funding, other funding to them? Okay, so, on forty-one, so, when I looked at the eligibility for this community resilience hardship fund, so, does this mean that the Glen Arden Track Club is eligible? If you look at the first budget, the first bullet, I'm sorry, if you look at the first bullet on that. On forty-two, what did I say?
Ms. Wilson, I will give you extra thirty seconds since I interrupted you.
You interrupted me for longer than thirty seconds?
I didn't interrupt you for longer than thirty seconds.
Okay. So, I think that on forty-five and forty, forty-five, forty-two and forty-five, I think that citizens should be, citizens should be eligible for one or the other, should receive one or the other. Then, that way, more people would benefit. If you, if, if you can understand what I'm, what I'm trying to say there. If you just give, give it, both of them out to the same people, then less people will benefit from it. And can I just quickly say something about forty-eight?
Sure. And that'll be your closing point.
Really quickly, I just, I said on this, definitely not. Because I think that you can lose track of your, of your money, and the council shouldn't, the council should, the council should be involved, not just the city manager and the treasurer. There's too much leniency there. It'll be too lax and not enough oversight. And definitely not ninety, ninety percent of your money is being invested, as was suggested, and not even thirty percent of your funds being invested. Our operating funds should not be invested. And if any funds are to be invested, it should be with some of what's in excess. That's money that, that's not being utilized at the time. No committee, because in the discussion, it was suggested that we have, that, that there be a, a.
Finance committee.
Yes, that's it. A finance committee.
Please close out your point.
And that the entire, I think that the entire council should be informed of all actions to be taken, not just when it's taken, but before it is taken. And it's not, it should not just be the, the president and the vice president, but it should be the entire council.
Thank you. So, just, just for, for clarity, on, on two points. One, even if there is a committee, the committee's responsibility is to report back to the council. So, the whole council will be informed. The same way, we have a charter review committee. We entrust that committee to review our charter, and they come back to the full council of what they have proposed, and we're all aware, and then we all can opine on whether we agree or disagree. So, the finance committee is just, you know, it's, it's, it's going to be responsible. One responsibility is going to be informed, to inform the, the entire council. The, and the second point is the, the, we are talking about pretty much excess funding. We have eleven million dollars. We have, what, six million in surplus, four million for, well, shoot, seven million of surplus, and about four million in ARPA. The surplus, we do not touch. So, it is excess. We don't lose track of it. I do not know right now what, on a day-to-day, I don't, I don't look at the bank account now. There's, there's no, this is not a different accounting. There, this is not an investment where you can lose money. This is, this is our money in our account. The same principles that the treasurer use now to pay bills or anything. It's the same policies, procedures that'll be in place. It is just, it is literally, I'm putting my money right here, and it grows overnight. That's it. It doesn't, it can never lose money. It just grows. Then tomorrow, I can take it, I can use it for whatever the city needs. I mean, that, that is it. There, there's no risk of losing any money. The, the transfer from the, from the interest-bearing account, let's use that instead of investment account, from the interest-bearing account, the transfer is instantaneous. When I transfer it, it's there in a millisecond for me to use. But most of the funds that we want to use is just the money that just sits there and does nothing. We don't earn anything on it. So, I just want to make that clear. This is not an investment fund. So, those are the two points I want to make, and I saw Councilwoman Guillaume had a response.
Council President, Councilwoman.
I'm sorry. I did see Councilwoman Hairston's hand first. So, Councilwoman Hairston?
Excuse me. I did ask a question that you did not answer.
We're gonna still answer.
Well, well, I'll come back to you, Ms. Wilson. Councilwoman Hairston?
Yeah, thanks. So, mine is short and sweet.
One, one second. Mr. Gray, can you turn up the volume so we can hear the people online? Go ahead, Councilwoman Hairston, I apologize.
All right, can you hear me?
A, a little bit better.
All right, no. So, we was just giving, I was just, we was talking about coaches and giving some recognition. So, I just didn't want us to miss Coach Barry and Coach Mike for the Boys and Girls Club. They the basketball coaches. That's all.
Thank you, sir. And then, and I see Ms. Hunter, your, your hand. We'll come back to you after we go to the council members to respond to Ms. Wilson's question. Councilwoman Guillaume?
Sure. Thank you, Council President. I wanted to respectfully disagree with Ms. Wilson as far as making it one or the other in regards to R forty-two, the hardship fund, and R forty-five, the intergenerational poverty relief fund. It's interesting that no one is saying anything about R forty-three, which is the legislation that Councilman Herring, Councilman Hairston, and myself brought forth for the Glen Arden Housing Authority, which pertains to this particular entity, which is the housing authority that helps people who are in limited, limited means to have their properties fixed. This is R forty-three. Though, that money will be given to the housing authority to have a contractor repair residential units and do other things to bring the housings up to code, per se, for lack of a better word. R forty-five is the same thing, except it includes the entire city. So, I'm hearing a lot about R forty-five and R forty-two. So, if I'm doing, if we're saying this, and that means anybody, anybody who needs to eat, who needs to have their bills paid, who needs to have their prescriptions filled, who has struggled and are probably still struggling, they still have to make a choice into having a leaky roof and getting a contractor to fix that, or having the city help them get something to eat, or help them with their medical bills, or help them with raising their families. I feel strongly about these legislations because Glen Arden is a predominantly black and brown community. We are still trying to catch up, black and brown people as a whole. Our communities are still trying to catch up as far, as far as code enforcement and liens and things of that nature. So, if we start off as a council with prayer and we're asking to do things and do right by citizens, I think the least we can do is to not have citizens choose, do I get the city to help me with my bills and my family? Or do I get them to fix this roof that's about to cave in? Or fix this door, fix this window, and give the money to a contractor? So, the contractor will get the money to fix the property, but I'm still hungry. I'm still struggling. That's two different things to me. And I don't believe anyone should have to choose to live in squalor and struggle as far as basic necessities imposed by hardship and also imposed by racist structures that have been here way before we've been alive. So, for me, this is something that I feel strongly about. I respect everyone's opinion, but I cannot see anyone saying, you either have a choice for me to fix your property or help you get by as far as daily living. So, that's that. And to answer, I believe, one of the questions that Ms. Wilson posed, I think, was about the Community Resilience Fund, Boys and Girls Club, Glen Arden Track Team, and every nonprofit that helps out in this, in, in this community. That's a legacy, legacy city and is located here. In addition to small businesses, yes, they are eligible for funding. But, sorry, sorry, just one last part. But, it also says that priority will be given to groups who did not receive funding from the City of Glen Arden or other areas first. So, that's it.
Council, who we, Councilwoman Fareed?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to remind citizens that we received several million dollars a couple of years ago in order to help our citizens, and we need to spend all of that money. If we do not spend all of that money, the federal government can and will take that money back from us. And what that will indicate is that there's not the need that they thought there was in the city, which will impact our ability to get resources from the federal government again, potentially from the state and from the county. So, this notion that we shouldn't do anything for our citizens because other governmental levels are doing it is, is just counterproductive to what we want to do in the city. We need to spend our money, whether it be through the ARPA funds that we've received, which we certainly need to use, or the funds that we're generating through the taxpayer dollars. We need to use that money on our citizens, not just for their needs as Councilwoman Guillaume elaborated, but on our infrastructure, on building up our city. No one is going to invest in our city if we do not invest in ourselves. So, I just want to address that because it seems to be a theme as though we're operating from a place of scarcity. And as Councilwoman Guillaume pointed out, we start our meetings with prayer. And if we don't have the faith and belief that the abundance that we are looking for to be bestowed upon our city can be received and actually used, then what are we even doing that for? The citizens of Glen Arden should expect that this city council and the mayor's office and the, and the administration will do everything in their power to bring as many resources to this city as possible and not just the resources that are not provided elsewhere. They should be looking here first.
Thank you. You turned up my mic. I accidentally turned up the. Mr. Gray, you can turn my mic down. Thank you. Ms. Hunter, you have five minutes, please.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Barely. Mr. Gray, so I don't need my mic turned up, but we do.
So, um, I'm.
Go ahead.
I'm, I'm actually, I'm on my way there. I'm, I'm taking somebody else. I'm, I'm actually on my way there.
Okay. Well, if you want to wait till you got here, that's fine, too.
Okay, that's fine.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Didn't hear.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor Cross, I see that your hand is up.
Thank you, Council President. And, um, I just wanted to address the comments that, um, uh, Citizen Wilson brought up about, um, mayor events and programs with others from other cities.
Mayor Cross, so...
I do want to acknowledge that any event held has that...
Mayor Cross. Mayor Cross. So at this point, we're taking public comments, uh, on legislation. So if you want to speak as a citizen, uh, you're, you're more than welcome to do that. Uh, but your, your comments will be limited to the legislation that's on the docket.
Right. But Mayor, uh, as I was, uh, it was brought up that the mayor has events that others come to. And I'm just acknowledging that any city event, others come to. So I just want us to not be highlighting that as something that only the mayor does. Any event held in this city is a public event. And there isn't a border, a guard crossing that says, show me your City of Glen Arden ID. You cannot come in from the city, uh, Glen Arden event, which the council holds, or the police, or anyone else. So I would really hope that we would find a more better place where if, if folks are coming, that it is a testament to the strength of the community, not a dig on any elected official. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Cross. Now, did Ms. Hunter say she was outside?
I was just going to, um, right here. Oh, is there anybody else?
Are there any? Yeah. Please state your name and you have five minutes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alonda McDuffie. Um, I had a question in regards to the hardship fund. And I'm noticing it goes by income. And Councilwoman Fareed, she stated about the amount of millions that we have to spend. What about those, um, families that kinda are on the borderline and need their houses repaired or certain things done? How can they get money? Like as far as roofing and windows and things of such of that nature?
Uh, just clarity. So you want to use your, do you want to ask all your questions?
That's my only question.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. McDuffie. Great question. I would say, right, stay tuned. We can't promise anything yet. I think right now, what we're doing is we're looking at those amongst us who have less income. And should the council, I can't, you know, speak for the entire council, but should the council hear concerns from people like yourself and others, or comments, I should say, such as yourself and others, and we come back and create another legislation to touch that demographic, then we would, you know, certainly vote, discuss, vote, and hopefully wish that it passes.
I'm not speaking necessarily for myself. Unfortunately, I mean, gratefully, I'm blessed. But I know several, um, seniors that have retired and had to go back to work. So that's what I'm speaking on, and need the house repaired.
Yeah. And I hear you because I, I'll be honest, my house needs repair. There's a certain part of it. And I don't even qualify for the legislation that I'm pushing forth. And that's one of the reasons why I'm pushing for this legislation similar to you. Like you're thinking of others, as am I, um, as are we, those who sponsor, who co-sponsored this with me. So I will say that if there are some seniors that you know of that are, or individuals that you know of that are in the predicament that you spoke of, let them reach out to, I'm accessible, as you know. Let them reach out to me and, and others up here. And I promise, as you know, I get back with folks.
And lastly, in regards to the funds, when do they have to be spent by?
Twenty...
Twenty six.
Thank you.
For folks who didn't hear on the microphone, that's by December twenty twenty-five.
You're up. Okay. Well, no, look, they're citizens. If they want to comment, they can. They each have, uh, five minutes. Just I ask that you state your name. Uh, and then you have five minutes to speak on the legislation that's on the docket today.
Okay. Um, my name's Aiden. And, um, I just wanted to say, um, I have, I had two mentors in my life while I was playing tackle football. It was Coach Sean and Coach Barry, 'cause I really didn't have anybody inside my life to talk to me, except my mom and my sister. And they were kind of like mentors to me. So when I was going through hard times, I could really talk to them. And it was kind of like, I, they were kind of like family to me. And it's like, it's kind of hard, like, kind of switching and moving to different teams. 'Cause like I know that they, they are like family, you know? And it's, I still, sometimes I still think about them. And I still talk to Coach Barry, but I haven't had time to call and talk to Coach Sean. But all I know is he's like a mentor to me, so.
Thank you. And, and you are a Glen Arden resident, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. You got four minutes left?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aiden.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alita Hunter and I'm a long-term, uh, Glen Arden resident. Um, as Sean, Mr. McCoy stated, I had my first job here working for Glen Arden in the summertime. Um, the Boys and Girls Club has always been a pillar in this neighborhood. Um, I have a sister that's twelve years older than me and she was involved in the Girls and Boys Club. Um, the track team, I grew up watching Lamont Sellers and, um, Larry Coleman and, um, Elgin. And you said, and now he's coaching. I grew up watching them and I saw what it did for them to keep them off the streets. And they had that unity, that family, um, to be on the track team. And I watched them get scholarships and go to college. So although Glen Arden Track Team has expanded, which we always want to expand and grow our borders and our boundaries, they don't exclude Glen Arden. I mean, sometimes you're gonna have to go look on the website. You're gonna have to find out when things are. It's information age, you gotta get out there. I have, I have youth and I've missed the deadline a couple of times. That's on, that's on me. But in as far as people going out for teams or the Girls and Boys Club, they don't turn anybody away. If you come and you want to play, you can play. I've even seen it where their kids don't have the money and they still allow them to come and play. They get their uniforms, their cheer uniforms, their football uniforms. So this money would definitely be helpful for them, 'cause I've seen the sacrifices. I've, I've seen, you know, we gotta get snacks, we have to do this. And, and digging out their pockets to do it, whether the parents do it or not. So I don't see where, I just don't see where they have excluded anyone or saying no. But I will say this, on any team that you go to, any organization, everybody's not gonna make it. And when you talk about track, that's an elite track team, but they will take you and they will build up your skill. Girls and Boys Club, they don't turn you away. And again, where was all the opposition for these tobacco stores in Glen Arden? We, we, we're fighting one another. No, no. We, we should not. Glen Arden is way better than this. Way better than this. We have got to take care of our own. Our youth, seniors, everyone, this is, I, I applaud you all for bringing these resolutions into place. I really applaud you. I do. We gotta join together and we have to stop. We gotta take our feelings out of this, stop making things personal, join together and be that great community that Glen Arden has always been and will continue to be. We got a lot of other things we need to work on here in Glen Arden. The rising crime, these tobacco stores and the other things that are going on. Somebody tried to tamper with a car in my driveway in broad daylight last week. Last week. And the chief of police knows what I'm talking about. So there's a lot of other things that we need to do. But as far as this Boys and Girls Club and the track team, Glen Arden Track Team, I support them one hundred and ten percent and I applaud you all. Thank you, Sean, for being a mentor. Thank you, Toya, for being a sister to me. I didn't know you. I met you when I brought my kids over there. Great job. That's all.
Thank you. Ms. Hunter? Are there any other, uh, citizens' comments? Okay. All right. Not hearing any more comments. I am going to close this. I'm sorry. Was there one more? Oh. Oh, okay. I'm gonna close this portion of, um, part of our legisla, uh, legislation, of our agenda. Uh, and so just want to say that the... Uh, okay. All right. All right. Please state your name and you have five minutes.
Hello, everyone. My name is Royette Smith and I've been a Glen Arden resident all my life. Um, it's very emotional for me because my dad started a business in Glen Arden in nineteen forty-eight. And to hear some of these people here put down the Boys and Girls Club, the track team, is very hurtful to me. Very hurtful. My brother was one of the boys that, um, was on the go-kart team that raced down Glen Arden, Glen Arden Parkway and Glen Arden Woods. He was on the football team. I never did any sports, so I can't speak on that. But it's very hurtful to know that there are citizens here that are trying to take away from the track team and the Boys and Girls Club, 'cause it means a lot to the community. I grew up with Mr. Colbert. My dad always sponsored the Boys and Girls Club, the Glen Arden Braves. He was one of the coaches for the Glen Arden Braves football team. He gave money to the track team all the time, all the time. I, too, worked here as a, um, summer hire here at the town hall and at the rec center. It's very, very hurtful, very, very hurtful to hear this craziness. And I'm a business owner here in Glen Arden and I support the legislation to give money 'cause we are still suffering from COVID. The hair salon and the barber shop especially. Um, the carryout, maybe not as much, but 'cause people want to eat still. But, um, it's very hard for me to come to these meetings and not say anything. I was trying my hardest not to come up here. But every time I've come to a meeting, almost, literally almost every time, there are people here that live in the community that fight and fight and fight against the community. And it's crazy, crazy. I, I just don't understand it. And just like the other lady spoke about the tobacco stores, we don't need that here. We have enough issues in Glen Arden with drugs. They don't need to be here at all. And I spoke with, um, Joanne Benson, the state senator, and she is opposed to that as well. And we need to get rid of those out of our community to make our community better. I think that's all.
Thank you. All right. Now with that, uh, pursuant to the Annotated Code of Maryland State Government, Article Section Ten Five O Eight A, the council by majority vote may retire to executive or closed session at any time during the meeting. Um, should the council retire to executive session or closed session, the chair will announce the reasons and the report be issued at a future meeting, disclosing the reasons why. And the reason why tonight is to discuss personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. So with that, um, I am going to motion, uh, that we adjourn into closed session. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes.
Councilwoman...
Yes.
Councilman Hairston?
Yes.
Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Joe?
Yes.
Council Vice President?
Yes.
And Council President?
Yes. Thank you. With that, uh, we'd like to thank our citizens for coming out tonight to have your voices heard. Our next meeting will be on Monday, next Monday at seven thirty, uh, the regular, I'm sorry, Juneteenth. Uh, our next meeting will be on next Tuesday, June twentieth, at seven thirty. Uh, it's our regular session where we'll be doing the voting for all the legislation that we have, uh, tonight. And again, you'll have opportunity to speak. Uh, and this time, you have opportunity to speak on anything you want to. Uh, and you have five minutes to do so. So with that, the open portion of this meeting is, is now closed. Thank you guys for coming out.
Recording stopped.
Yes. Yeah.